Alright, well, I think it's Lady. It is this week. On our first line of course, we have um, we did um, so about a hundred previous events. Um. We've generated a lot of questions in the area. Okay. And um, comment on your.
Just checking all the status of the company and um, zoom in that everything can turn in that needs to be turned in. Any feedback from the state?
No feedback yet.
Generally, they're usually good little monster back on. Possible to check. In what? Yep. Which is?
Um, next study agenda is uh, reports manager, department budget. Um, I didn't hear any questions about that. This is for me. You got it. I don't know if there's anything that stood up to you though.
Uh, we didn't try to find personnel. And uh, we should. To say. As we start out again, in the total line of things. Can there be any department needs to be done? I'm sorry.
Um, I have one more for them. For some of our persons.
Uh. Did you have a?
Okay, I'm gonna, if you want. Maybe I can get a few. Additional information. You wanna announce that each, each character is involved in activity. Uh, that due to the. Uh, at the gym, um, discharge has been started already. And so you started gym rating, gym. But there are a number of people will come back to you. Off set, self care or true. What we do, used to do, turns up. I think it's. There you go. If you want. The cover. Yes. So far, for hour and a half, uh, to keep on. So I'm gonna. With this.
Just sort of like local people about that link.
We're gonna pop, we'll tap on it there. That's right. And then, right, um, with. So probably that. You know, and then you're gonna. Probably take to the. Um, that's, that's a. We begin, then we second. Uh. Twenty six, seventy four. Ninety six, seventy four. One, six, nine, three, six. Uh, it will be. For that. Ten.
How can I?
Uh, twenty six last. So okay, twenty six. All right. Twenty six.
Question, um, of size. When will this hit? The E P R D station now? It is.
So we can go, we can go recharge it on, get the. It's starting as the characters of the trading post in Reno, uh, also kind of import. So that's a, it's a network. Clear that. Right now, it's already uses that network. Cause that available. Customers we have. Do those. Things. Uh, Port of Gills, my last Thursday. Uh, the. Rule. On that. A day long. And get in the room. Chairs, chairs, to that. No. And everything. And held the CEOs. Uh, just in that case. Uh, number thing. Into the late end, I think you're saying. Through the start of the season. Turn around. And uh, and a lot of people back. On. Are you, that, 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 that. Season, uh, try to have, sorry, not the. So it's, um, made in that, and we have T P S. For that, the broken structure, actions of energy that is really the. And so. System of. I mean, it's a, I'm concerned for, make sure we're. Or in peak form, uh, and. Are you certain, please, phone to me. Um, some of those. Uh, um, was a inquiry made at the last meeting. I got, I proposed a question about. Uh, by helping other agencies during emergencies. And I have a fast spoken with our. Underwriting this whole thing. And the. Just we've been. This is kind of health, human health and safety issue. They highly discourage. That, um. I should tell that to do the same. Which are being a property concern and a doubt of health and. Emergency. Um, and wait. It's. I'm then with, with. Sorry. There was one. Guard. Through this. Rest of equipment all, all the thing. As with some, uh, other things. Essentially, I grant. Dig. Watching. That, that would be it. No. So. On that, but. On that. Tell that. If for. Lot of the. Definitely which are concerned is all it is. As far as our direction, the county. It's not. We. I. First time. Um, can that. And eight hundred. Please.
To that. So this size does. You know. This. Three minutes. This. Probably. Okay. This time. Some of the. To the private. That. Current. Uh, of the way to the. Uh, so. Department. And agree. Uh. Aware of this. By us separate. It's right here. Trying how. Or have you found out my health and health and safety. Like. Hey, that. This, this. Where the property. Like. They place. Safety shop. Remember that. It's possible. In that our insurance coverage. Does it got records in accident where. Something. In a way where the. Right. Exactly. It is. I think. But. Now. You know. Right. Equipment. Major. Toxic to personal. Moving. Gets. Brand of. Yes. It's, I think we are. That. That for. Your. Your. My. And safety. Two. Things are property, properties versus. Seems like. Yeah. Right. It's. Yeah. It seems like there's. One there. That what you're involved in. I think it's. They do. But they. They. Take it or. I think that's the biggest. One. Okay, the downer. I know. There. No. That one. Thank you. We will. involve that. But. It's. Like that's. But they haven't had time for me. I just. I've never had. But. I. I would just say, I don't think the. Fire departments. No, it's. When the power is, I don't think. It's, it's a safety concern. I think that's all come. Um, I. Safety. But there. People want, I think I have my safety. And that. It's a. Nation. Yeah. I mean. I think I've heard. Yeah. Well, now that we can turn out.
It is, it's become a, all comes a safety concern.
It's.
Also. I thought it was. My hope is to see if this was developed. Wow. I agree. There. I had a discussion. For three. It's also. Things. Maybe if we. Kind of. Great. And if you have a. It's a way to sell. Right. This is not. I mean. Team. These are, this is. Like if it's one. In video. Of years. Like that. A difference can then every to get a means or it's a thing, it's a basis of this seller's, you know. I'll stay planning for the. That's. So. You don't. Brain. Of. It's a home. But it's just that ways. I convert everything else when he's given. Like. It was a given. The children. And. Yeah, I think. Less, um, mechanical. Measured. Yeah. Uh, I know. Houses. Reach your force out hill and that, and this drain that flooded the ditch could handle. Emergency. Or. Two. So. This time. So a lot on your ground. Right. Then we apply for emergency fund. That is. Down here. So. Yeah. Yeah, we did. We're. We need the time on. For. Two thousand and road. Where we had to. Eight hundred fires. That was forty thousand. Looks like. It's like. Eight hundred. Oh, four hundred.
It's like, I mean, too. But this is a. Very clean. Brain. You do.
Yes.
Um. We need to make the first.
The rates. The. Okay. Um, if you, if you open the ten. Please qualify as disadvantaged and the. I don't know how much we wanna celebrate. So I'm gonna use census tract formation, census tract. Qualifies as disadvantaged. And. Our census tract, Landre, Sherriff, Watson. Place of, 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 of man. That's in the. Camera are easy because we didn't. Were eligible for. You know, we don't discuss everyone, we are eligible. So there is a hundred.
Hundred, okay.
Oh, energy, energy.
Okay, so.
Right, this is their plan.
What I say though is. If, if we through the, uh, community action grant that we could also. Fly over to help owner. Home owners, um, the, the, the.
Size.
Of the. Addition and.
What, what. Granted, uh, the energy upgrades and. There's, so you need to plot events in form. I think. Comes to some. Back. Back. Since. Top of the case, since I'm. Probably. Um. You know. If you have some of the. Energy. Grades and efficiencies in action. For which the company. Probably. Be. Let you. Be with a budget. And. The budget for, um, the whole. Okay. For me, so the apple. So. Something. It's. So you need to everybody eligible. And finally, primary, primary. Right. You want this one. Yeah. Um. So, I was kind of developing that, like. Like I said. And Mary said, this is like you want me to plan. Play more. More adventure and do. Um. Um.
Fire department wasn't supposed to because two guys went around the train. They've taken the course through. If you watch that film, because it actually showed another organization.
The same people that have been washed out of their homes at the same time. Yet are on the way to the city. Is there a, would there be complaints to that? Or a fact of fact general we can release that are fired from the city? The census is.
It would be totally without a process. It's just.
You're looking at my, I'm getting my calls. I have the number of calls. For telling what the calls. So. That if you wanted something more than that.
We don't need to contact you. I am allowing the proper. Um.
To the bank. So. Not sure. So there's nothing. Yeah. Yes, yes, I believe that. Did find the mortgage. But I have enough and not to take you over.
I know some versions before. I was like, that's why I got.
Went by there. A couple of weeks. The law was wide open. This kind of maybe that. Well, when they're.
Right. See, uh.
All right, thanks. That one's. What are we thinking about? So let's send down. Is there anything that?
Yeah, this is my cat. It's kind of technically taking. When the. The idea around it and now moving forward. This action. And to do it in a manner that's. Businesses, trying to launch businesses. In town. If we ever come from a parking lot. At least. Be a part of that. I think it would be a great problem with businesses make money. And. Managing. That's so the. Planning is actually becoming the other real challenge. Wearing T-shirt. So you still can do that. Run a poll. When you said. Put on with. Us for four. At the cost of. A week. And it broke. She had an idea to clarify on perhaps even as a justice. Still, a little running summer fest. I am. Creation, so our. That's possible promotion. Kind of. And directly. There's a lot of money recommended. For photograph each of that. With library messages. And it is saying. You folks. The library. Last. That's right. Yeah. Support. I want to. Try. At least. Few months. Sure, properties in New Deal. After for. The weekend.
You isn't. On site.
Yes. So this. Develop. Yeah, like similar to Snow, I guess. Think of it as a snow roll.
Yeah.
Brochure and it's that Chantel and others helped draft together. And then to put that out there and promote it. In a way where we're anticipating we're going to have some increased logistic. It's not clear at this point if the group might want to figure a way that local businesses have some activity up at the gym or we could use that. Um, and then we can go to the bathroom. But if we're tended, we're tended up there. Immediately the group. Said to me, we should do a community meal. Everybody said, no, let's figure whether businesses make money around that. And to really support that and figure that we may. Need to feed people. Enjoy, enjoy ourselves.
One of the issues that recently hit my radar is that it's happening when the kids will be on the bus's home.
That just.
And I know we have a large homeschool contingent that. But I think. Corey gave us the school. I can talk to my brother because he's our. Our school board.
Yeah.
And see if there's been any discussion. Because early release. Early release.
Yeah. If the kids home and learn.
Hopes already. Or. I think they are, they've already had those discussions. I don't know if there's.
Green goes down in that discussion too.
Yeah. I mean, there, there must be because it's either keep the kids late or let them go early. But to have a bus seems like not just a.
Any.
Poor planning, but. Not incredibly safe.
No, anytime soon. Right, even. Right. So, and maybe that's a good thought is to officially approach it as. Get it as a day where kids are. Taking into our activities that need for educational needs to get, I mean, there'd be some great educational. Opportunities. Opportunities and design it that way. So all the kids homeschooling public school. Are doing that. But yeah, the school bus is running. At times. For a kid. If we have. This traffic that they could, could be.
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't make good sense. Sorry, that would be a good inquiry.
Oh, my last question. Again, but you can. Especially the one that's coming to next week. What's.
From my understanding that we were retaining her as a service provider. It appears to be still a work in progress.
Contact her tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the piece of chicken.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, town committee.
We've got the application.
Well, we've got nothing to report because we haven't met yet this month. We choose.
A further reminder.
Same old symbol.
And rec recreation?
We have, we have a bit in the works. We're going to start. For teens and adults next Wednesday. From five to eight. So right after the race, kids club will just keep it open. And there'll be, I've had quite a few people ask for, you know, can we just play basketball, whatever?
Yeah.
So we're going to try to give that a try. We're doing. Got a movie night finally planned for February 24th. So I'm going to start spreading more of that and do Wizard of Oz start. Then we've got a kids open gym plan. That we're working on for Monday is 12:32. I know it's the middle of the day because a lot of kids down here for homeschool for our class. But it's open to anyone. I, you know, vacation week, whatever kids are just. I just got some. Bunch of kid rec stuff for the gym that we can still wear active gym assholes and. And things like that. So we've been. Getting a lot of soft savings. But. You know, for the older, decent adults and for the kids here during the day. And then, you know, well, I think what I'm going to work on is getting the gym scheduled together. We've got Pickleball Monday, Wednesday, Friday that. Her name. Soup Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
From Reno. Pickleball. Just trying to get some more use out of it. I think that's our. That's what we've got going on right now. We just finally formally kind of got organized and, you know, we're meeting third Tuesdays now every month. And we're trying to get things a little sorted out because it was a little bit. You know, buying for a year or so, but.
Sounds great. Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, the recent, so Morgan Morale is. Chair, chairing the committee and station poll and is the secretary for that committee. With the membership updated and a nice, nice group of folks to energize. That.
Thank you. All right, did I leave anybody else? No festival, all right. All right, old business, CEO report.
So Kent sent me. This today. And. Some additional info that I need, need here to. To track. Who is, and Sue and I spoke more about this, sort of tracking the specific cases and. And getting that. Getting that moved along and, and tracking. But there are several, several permit. Currently that are after the fact permits. So trying to get, get folks lined up on that and then get consistency to make sure. Well educated on the need to get permits upfront rather than after the fact. And to make that work more efficiently. And. The information passed on to the appeals board there relates to the case that I was telling you about that the. Appeals made a decision on last week. And the question that they enter, you see on there is something that. The rec committees are already talking about, which is the possible changing hut down the beach. And I would certainly. Building a permanent structure there will not be possible because of proximity to the water. And also building something portable. If we transport it will. Be pretty key to that and also beats different safety needs. Make sure we've got a safe facility down there. So the. The recreation. We did have a discussion about last week as well to move forward on that. Because there is funding in the current budget for developing that. That, so that's something that can be developed and built this, this spring before June. So it's ready for the next. The next season.
How long have you sent those?
He's just looking.
So like this, this is like. I mean, this is worthless.
I agree.
Okay. And this is, so I, this is what's been since. My first meetings in June or July. And nothing has changed since. And then we talked about. Getting something and then we had a discussion about asking another town. And then Sue went out and found. October ninth and gave two forms that would be really, really nice to have as this. Because this, I mean. Next meeting, can we, can we, can. At least like have a form. Yeah, I, I, I know that this needs to go down to Kent, but this is, this is not, this is like, this got no relation to it. So like. I just don't know anything. So I think we need to.
Nor I, I. And knowing enough about.
Yeah, I think we, we, we need to, we need to take a round turn on it and, and really figure out like. Have some data collected and so we can track it. Because this is, you know, it's now. Eight, nine months. Nothing's really changed. So I, I mean, I don't, we, besides the property on Center Street and Tenny Hill, I don't know anything. Anyway. Because I know documents or anything like that. So I think, I think we need to take a round turn on it. Like next, next month. Like, you know, those two.
I resent you that email that just now that I sent in October with two different towns. CEO monthly reports that might be good templates to start with. But I agree, we talked about it before the meeting as well.
Yeah.
All right, also new business? Any amendments or documents we need?
Yes, actually. So. I do an appointment here for Janamar Pella for the alternate, alternate planning board member. She lives in today and. Expressed continued interest, so she'll be back tomorrow. You don't have an extra space for the third person, but you can certainly throw your signature on there.
We did add a line in the warrant, so we'll get some.
Okay.
And then Spring Creek BBQ, I'm staying too. We knew there with the license. And then I have here, so for the March 5th election that's coming up. I have. Some appointments for ballot clerks. So we have Kathleen Anderson, Nancy Putnam, Sandra Hardy, Wayne Hardy. And Cindy Ranta and Cindy Turner as the ward. And then I have two supplemental warrants for free growth penalties on the assessor.
There's ones that are.
Yeah, and yeah, when you take it out, there's a penalty. So then people bought some property, took it out. And it's basically just showing the amount of the penalty. And then I have the 2024 assessment return from the county. So they do have. Copy of their budget. And a tax base allocation, et cetera. I don't have any extra copies of this, but if you want, I can email this to you tomorrow. Just have, and it is what it is, so.
And what it does have, so the county assessment, while you're getting that. The preliminary probably have looked like it's going to be flat with. Changes that the county made to the budget they had about. Some grant funding and such. The assessment this year is 154,5350.
Already done.
That was a $30,000 increase. Last year there was a $30,000 increase in the county. This, what they sent us was for 158,233, which is a difference of 4,933 increase. Which will be a 3.2% increase. And it looks like this preliminary on dual funding, which is right about. I think I sent you an email that I called the superintendent's office to get additional clarification. Then what those numbers mean, these are numbers that come without, without any wiggle room.
No, for keeping an orderly pile and that's good enough.
This is the tree, girl.
So with two of those, there would actually be action items. If you want to make a motion, it would be the, the spring liquor license for Spring Creek. Which is on your next agenda item. And the appointment that you just signed for. As an alternate for the planning board.
Right, so we. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm kind of new at the. The chairing part. Are we making a motion for both of those or? Okay, all right.
If you would.
All right. I don't know. I will make a motion. All right, I will make a motion and consider the application for renewal of the on premises licenses for Spring Creek BBQ.
Sorry.
All there. And also make a motion and consider an appointment to the planning board of Dana Markell. As alternate, is that correct?
Yes, I can say it.
All there. And item D, under new business, consider authorizing administrative renewals by the town manager and/or town clerk for on premises, on premise liquor licenses without issues. New licenses or renewals for establishments with issues will still require select board public consideration.
So this actually is a process that comes recommended from our regional liquor agent, Eric. He's the state agent who services all our liquor license establishments. And Dan says it's a matter of routine for administratively renewing on issues, on, on renewals that don't have issues. Issues, there have been law enforcement issues. The dialogue with this sheriff's department and state folks that if there've been liquor violations or other issues, those certainly come for, for hearing, iteration of renewal. But you'll recall, there've been a lot of special elections, uh, special slide board meetings over the last year to handle late applications for renewals that were expiring before next regular session. Everybody's getting better at it now. And I did want to give a huge shout out to Nick, who is really setting a nice example over a number of months with all the special licenses and the manuals. I've really been on top of that and getting advanced. Spring Creek tonight is a couple of months before they expire. So there's a real shift toward doing that, but it gives the ability that if there is a renewal for us to sign.
How would we know if there's an issue? How's that, what channels does that go through to get to us then?
Uh, we'll, we'll know. And it'd be through the sheriff's department and, and to our state. So it could be as, as simple as if the renewal comes in, speaking with a liquor control agent, who will know if there've been any law enforcement.
How, how is that, so I guess the question is, does that come like, is, so when, say there is an issue, is it in the, the renewal, like application, is it on the renewal like, so are you just going to have to put two separate?
No, it, I think it's on, yes, or it's not, and we, we come to you. We haven't had any of those.
Right, and we don't.
I've been in communities where, where there are, and there's certain liquor enforcement issues, then it's up, you know, it's up to the governing body, you, to determine if you're not renewing.
Right, but so, so say hypothetically, a bar in town has an issue. And it's now eight months since the issue, like with the renewal, can they just be like, oh no, here's my renewal? So what's, what's, I guess, show up the renewal or does it show just from you knowing that there was an issue?
Checking with the enforcement, checking with enforcement.
So that's part of your, your procedure is?
Part of the procedure.
Okay, so if you get a renewal that, that you have authorization sign, your, your part of your procedure would be a call to make sure that there's.
Would be about liquor control, call the sheriff.
And if there was an issue, you'd have it run by the select board?
Absolutely. We get that, there's an issue related to, there've been problems, which fortunately, I don't think you've had historical issues here, everybody runs nice operations. And they're really sensitive to that. There's really good dialogue between our liquor control agent, Eric. When the general store has a license, but they get an additional license, you recall, on their short notice for Friday wine tasting, where they asked that, where the liquor controller said no, the gallery store needed a separate license. So that one you got very short, like you had a meeting the day before that tasting to get, to get that in, in place and do that. So there's really good dialogue between liquor control agent and the establishments. I'm, especially as everybody's getting on board. Probably not a big issue. Our attorney is fine with this as well in terms of, of doing that. So procedurally, and the liberal advisors have two administrators who can handle that. So if you really are set up to do this on a day of basis, sort of, then you've got two people that are empowered to check with law enforcement and find out as a panel. But absolutely for new licenses and any renewal that has. You get it and it's a public discussion.
Reenactment.
I moved authorized administrative reels by the town manager and/or town clerk for on premise liquor license without issues.
For seven, okay, all in there. Sounds logical.
And you'll get notification, certainly.
Yep.
In form of that's taking place, but without the requirement of me.
Thank you. Item E, consider setting, am I taking your turn by the way?
What's that?
Did you want to like?
No, 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 I was going to do it.
I'm sorry.
I'll do it next.
We don't have an official chair person yet.
I was gonna say, you're kind of owning this.
I know, I know.
Good audition.
We were gonna take turns, but I kind of got away with it.
Well, that's cool.
Sorry. All right, item E, consider setting a special select board meeting for February 22nd for the purpose of budget committee appointments.
I moved to setting a special select board meeting for February 22nd for the purpose of budget committee appointments.
That would be at six o'clock, if they take it?
And you will have the timing, yeah, you do have the timing option of this special select board meeting, whether you want that prior to, if you go on to set a town meeting, of which order you want to do that. Whether you want a town, town meeting followed by select board, or you have additional need to be taken. But you could do it, you could do it either direction, like you did tonight with the hearing first on the warrant, then adding the special select board. I think that would probably be my recommendation, so if there's any other action that arises.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so F, consider a warrant for a special town meeting on February 22nd to consider authorizing funding for the purchase of a used fire truck.
Just so everyone's aware that, you know, we've met a couple of times as a fire truck committee last few weeks. And what we've been able to do is we have free fire department representatives and we've got three members from the town, myself and then the town manager. We've got two alternates. What we've done is we've taken just a whole look of the, the approach and we've established, we wanted to, as a committee, was to have a recommendation going forward from the town. But to do that, we wanted to deliberately organize ourselves to establish the need for a truck. You know, make sure that that exists. And we've done that based upon anecdotal evidence, means cost, also, you know, guidelines that the fire, natural fire associations have for, for trucks. And then the fire department was tasked with discussing what the requirements are, what they need in the truck. Cause I think they're a used truck, so you're not going to have a choice for bells and whistles. It's going to be what it has on it. And, and so it's got to fit for the town. So we do have those requirements in our back pocket. And then we, the town manager had talked with, and it's got the same thing. And we were presented with three financing options. We had a unanimous, unanimous recommendation for one of them that is within the town warrant language. But what we wanted to do is make sure that it wasn't just the fire department, that we had some input from the town. We had input from the select board, town manager, and we've all been able to come together and basically move forward with a unanimous recommendation for this town warrant. And do we have to read the town warrant?
It's probably best.
Okay.
And then we can summarize the nuggets of the.
So the, the reading of the town warrant is Town of Monson Special Meeting Warrant, February 22nd, 2024. To Jay Grenier or any other resident of Town of Monson in the county of Piscataquis in the state of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said Town of Monson in the said county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Monson Town Office in said town on Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 at five p.m. in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles to win. Article one, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting and to be voted by a written ballot. Article two, to see if the town will, one, appropriate a sum not to be $350,000 to acquire a fire department truck. Was there another?
To acquire replacement.
Replacement fire.
Fire department truck.
Yeah, fire department truck, the project. And two, off the select board to allocate $75,000 from the fire equipment reserve to pay for a portion of the project. And three, authorize the treasurer to issue general obligations securities of the Town of Monson that find the main cost of the project in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $275,000 plus any additional premium in the discretion to fix the dates, maturities, calls for redemption or funding, places of payment, premiums, form and other details of securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of Town of Monson to provide for the sale thereof and to execute any and all other documents agreements related there to financial status. Total town indebtedness. Bonds standing unpaid, 1.252, $485.12. B, bonds authorized in unused, zero. C, bond to be issued of this article approved, 346,704.19. Total, 1,599,189, sorry, 599,189.30. At an estimated interest rate of 6.15% for an estimated seven-year maturity of March 1, 2031, the estimated cost of this bond will be, principal, $75,000, interest, $71,704.19. Total debt service of 346,704.19. Total town indebtedness, A and C, all include current bonds and vehicle lease purchase agreements. The register will be open regular office hours, Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 for the purpose of collecting the list of voters. You must be a registered voter of the town to vote at the town meeting given under our hands this eighth day of February 2024. Any other questions regarding?
So the, the group talked about already identifying vehicles that are out there right now.
Yeah, they've looked at, uh, cause it goes pretty quick. So, you know, the used fire truck market is pretty, um, just things go off, you know, once it's identified, there are people ready to buy it. And it's pretty dynamic. And so what this does is allows us, the town, once the fire department identifies a truck that's, that's our need, the town manager or who else is authorized to negotiate and go ahead and pick it up. We're hoping that that's just the top, top line. There have been some trucks that are. I think C should be here for that and when. Looks like this is a community. Um. It's like. The ones that they're asking for. Question is. The budget. Speed ocean. It was supposed to be. That is the warrant. Like I've. He's putting down. I don't.
They may be able to be put out on that one, I don't know if you remember the other one that we did.
Must have. The mark was it, it was a ten. It was four. So that the, the. Drivers. Or. There's a. I think, yeah, I'm. Cause we don't have, I'd have one, but. Why? It's a.
I think that, and, and a lot of people don't, no, just get it. That's the number of. And, and yeah, she's got. And send a direct mail. You've got to sign up. Come on. So this is. To, to. I didn't want to have anything. Three more. One. I didn't like. Using it on people. That's going so quickly, sir.
You know, it's, um, that. I just didn't. Didn't, the town or half. That, you know. It's a divorce. That. Yeah. Please hold it. It's just a half. From. As I use the. This one. For anything.
No, I can't. So I just let it.
Every time. That one, you know. But I also want to exactly. Be this.
So people, I. I'm on my prime, um, no. They're trying, is the people going? Who exactly is on this fire department? Or is the commander going with them?
Uh. Oh, I was. Then, the. Doesn't have, so. Yeah, rise. This is. Yeah. Cross. It is. Probably. Fire department. Right now. Yeah. I do. I like. White. Yeah. Again.
Ah. I'm like. Down like. They come like. Like here. I appreciate. This is.
Yeah.
I think. No.
Oh. Yeah, and I think. There should say, why? Anything about. Like. Sure. Take it out.
So. I should. Uh. Get on the track.
Okay, there's. It's a. He would. It's. Rumor. What, what, it's fine, it's something, let's say. We. Think it'd be able. He's taken. It's up. We're gonna know. You know. Before. And then. First. I want to say. Everybody. So. But. Went in. Since. You. On the. So.
I. Same, um, price. So. I mean. People that. To be. And. They're.
So what? Before, when we. The truck. The three. Together. And. And so. Part of the, that's. Not. A seismic.
So. You. You're saying. It's just that. But. You are. And I have.
Gonna have. So. So. So that. Is. That's that. Own. You. You. That's. I. So. Who gets me? Hey. So. Cause I was. Like. All. We. And. Okay. This. Just. Not. Just. Oh. What? But they want. Uh. I don't. It's. Yeah. That's just. We. We. Did deliver. So I don't think. I don't think timing is going. Yes, it's pretty quick. But we live in a time. Or. Or. Home calls are. We're all. Um. Don't. And. It's. Eighteen. I. I trust. I've done. I'm. Yeah. Uh. Okay. I'm still on. So. Yeah. The way. Yeah. Go. I paid for the. Hmm. Price. I know. I think. They. Part of it. I. Station. Right. So. Other words, now we're trying to talk. Something. About something. But. They. I don't. I think. My. We. There's. Yeah. Saying. There's now. Now. So. That. Yeah. In the. Uh. The. And. That. I mean. And John. That's it. I. In there. And. Yeah. We. We. And. I. I'm. I'm sorry. The one. This. I'm. Yep. I thought so. Um. That was. For. Going. Yeah. They need the. I. So. Actually. Yeah. It's. On. The. It's. So. They. Had. Little. You know. I think. Cheaper level. Um. That was my. Yeah. Of. Cool. I think. Yeah. Yeah. Uh. I think. This. This. So. Cause. It. It. But. It's like. Also. I'm. There that. Ends up not being. Which. My question about. The first. This is most question. Like. The. Don't. Or. Yeah. The. Service. Is not. Or. What? Yeah. I should. Yeah. So. So. To my. We. Gee. Um. We. Oh. I'll rise to um both. Um. The. Things. Pro. This. So. So. Do you want? Um. Yeah. You. Just. And. Because. And. Just. Or. We. So. Right. That. We. Yeah. So. Fine. This guy's. Just. So. Okay. Did. For. Or. Like. Say. I'm. Just. You. Happy and happy. Oh. They do. For. Our. For the. Well, the first. Get our operating. Um. Um. Right. Okay. This. It. Three. And. This. I'm. Finally. Yeah. I don't. I. People. Look. It. But. I like. People. Has. Have. Doing. And. This. Was just. Didn't do. So. Now. Yeah. I think that was. This. Any. Things. Saying. They. Have. This. But. This. I. See. Um. So. But. This. This. I mean. This. And. The. To. That. Does. Like. Hmm. Oh. Oh. I don't. Happened. Uh. You. It. Tonight. Yeah. Okay. Um. Thanks. And. Anything else to this? And. The. Yeah. We are going to go into. Session. For one M R. It's. The. For. Six. Matters. Um. Oh. Yeah. You want. Yeah. You. But. So. Okay. So. Uh.